There is no reportable action. Direction was given to the interim city manager on several items, specifically items B, C, and D. And with that, that concludes my announcement. Thank you.
Great, thank you. We will stand in recess for just a couple of minutes to let the council reconvene. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our regular city council meeting. We are back in session at 7:02 PM. At this time, I'd like to ask pastor Nathaniel Sevilla from Laguna Niguel Seventh Day Adventist Church to come forward for our invocation. And then we have junior Girl Scout troop 4407 is going to come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance thereafter. If you all would please rise.
Let us pray. God of the universe, we thank you for what you do for us today. We come to you because we are thankful for the gifts that you give to us. We are thankful tonight for the gift of reasoning and decision-making and of those in this room. And God, we ask today, specifically tonight, that you will be present with us, that God you would speak to our minds and that you would speak through our mouths. God, because we know when you are here and you are present, there is goodness, there is greatness, and yes, there is unity. God, we ask that as we speak, that we do so truthfully. But though it may be truthful, we ask that we would also do it kindly. We ask that as we speak with conviction, that it would also be in humility. And yes, though we speak for our own interests, we ask that we would also speak for the interest of the other. God, you are the unseen hand in these walls. And though your presence is invisible, we ask that it will be made visible by the way we speak tonight, that you may be clearly seen. Thank you for granting us the gift of your presence tonight in these walls. But we ask that you also do so even as we leave them. We thank you for your gifts. Amen.
Audience attention, color guard advance. Color guard, present the colors. Would the honorable mayor, city council members, and audience please join in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's fantastic. If you would, just stay put. We'll be right down, take some pictures, and say hi.
Audience may be seated.
Great job. Well done. Was that first? Who's done this before? Anyone? Wow, so you're veterans. Oh, this is good. No wonder it was so good. Can we give them a big round? Isn't that fantastic? Well, we always want to say thank you. Do we have any parent volunteers and troop leaders that are here? To make sure that... Oh, coming up. Thank you. We want to make sure we get a chance for you all to say hi. So if you would, please tell us your name, what grade you're in, and what school you go to. And you can just pass the microphone down. We'll get to say hi.
Hello, my name's Izzy Morgan, and I go to George White Elementary School, and I'm in fifth grade.
Hi, my name's Gianna, and I'm in fifth grade at George White Elementary School.
Hi, my name is Gianna, and I'm in fifth grade at George White Elementary School.
Hello, my name is Josephine, and I'm in fifth grade at George White Elementary School.
Hello, my name is Sophia, and I'm in fifth grade at George White Elementary.
Hi, my name is Chloe. I'm in fifth grade, and I go to school at John S. Malcolm Elementary.
Hi, I'm Patricia Morgan. I'm the troop leader of these wonderful girls. I'm in a big grade.
I think I'm in that grade, too. Well, thank you so much. Do you mind if we get a picture with you all? Great, thank you. Wow, thank you so much. Now, who's going to do the dismissing? You are? Do you want a microphone?
Color guard dismissed.
Awesome job. Good job. Let's give a big hand. Thanks, girls. Well, thank you very much. So nice. We, in addition to Girl Scouts, we have proclamations and presentations tonight. So I wanted to invite up some people. Our first presentation this evening is the proclamation declaring May 5th through 11th, heck, that's right now, isn't it, as Municipal Clerks Week. And we've got a couple of those. So this time, I wanted to be sure and ask our city clerk Gomez, and is Juan here, too? City clerk, Deputy City Clerk Guana Gomez, come up. I'm sorry, Juan Alouer, come up. We have this wonderful proclamation. Do you want to hold it? Do you want to see it? This wonderful proclamation, and I'll give you a chance to talk if you want to. But I wanted to tell everyone else that we're very proud, the municipal clerks that we have here. We're very blessed to have you both. We thank you for all your service, and it's cool that you have your own week. So we totally got to get a mayor's week. I don't know, we don't have one, so. So thank you for anything you want to say?
Just that this is a special week. It's our 50th anniversary of Municipal Clerks Week. So we've been around for a long time. We're one of the oldest professions, actually, in government, and we're proud to be public servants.
Well, y'all don't look a day over 39 week. So it's really?
Thank you. I know, we're going backwards.
Well, thank you very much. We want to get a picture with the council, too, if you don't mind. And I think Jonathan's going to take it. Great, thank you very much, y'all. Thank you for all you do. They keep us in line and out of trouble, and that's a full-time job for sure. What did you say? Now to get back to work, right? Our next proclamation is very important, declaring all of May 2019 as Mental Health Month. And this time, I'd like to ask Mara James, Mara, come on up, as the founder and CEO of Extraordinary Lives Foundation, to come forward for the presentation. Please, come on up.
Thank you for proclaiming May again as National Mental Health Awareness Month. My name is Mara James. I'm the founder and CEO of the Extraordinary Lives Foundation, and we have two board members, Lauren Perry and Jane Noble. Our mission is to support children's mental health and wellness. And this year, we're honored to be partnering with Each Mind Matters, Nami, California, and Mental Health America, California, to host events at all five Major League Baseball stadiums. Tomorrow's our first event, if anybody's interested, at Padres Stadium, if you can get off a day at work. Otherwise, our local event is at Angel Stadium on Sunday, May 19th, at 1:07. And if you want more information, you can go to our website, www.el.foundation. And we're grateful to the city of Laguna Niguel for the grant we received to sponsor 50 children, local children and their families from YMCA Hidden Hills to attend this event and have a day that they'll never forget. So high five for mental health.
Yes, I'll wear your high five if you want to. Now, the San Diego, that's not in Laguna Niguel, right? I just want to make sure that.
It's close. It's close.
It's somewhere else. Okay, good.
San Diego, Laguna Niguel, yeah.
Okay, good. Come on, if you want to get a picture. And I'll, yeah, on behalf of the city, we have a proclamation for you. I won't, I won't read the whole thing, but we are very proud of all that you're doing. Just wanted to say thank you. So thanks for coming in today. That's why I was there. Awesome. Thank you all so much. Thank you so much. You want it back? That's good, for the game. Thank you so much. Yeah, thank you. So glad you came. Thank you. We have one last presentation this evening, and it's a proclamation declaring May of 2019, in addition to our last one, as Older Americans Month. I will be presenting this proclamation on behalf of the city council at the Older Americans Luncheon on May 17th at Sea Country and the community center, and we'll be very happy to give that. So I want to show it to you before we present it later on. It looks like this. So thank you very much to the older Americans, and we'll thank the rest of the council will be here. And that concludes our proclamation. So we're back up on the dais. Fantastic. Now it's time for our public communications. So I will open public communications. Any person wishing to address the city council will need to complete and present to the city clerk a gold-colored request to speak form. They're found at the back right of our chambers back here. Please be aware that we have a three-minute limit tonight for each person. To allow equal time for speakers, you can't give your time to another person. But if you have a statement that you would like somebody to read, feel free to pass that along to them, and they can finish reading your statement. City Clerk Gomez, I received three of these. Do you have any more now? Okay, good. So let's take those in order. Our first speaker tonight is Rick Regal. I'd say welcome to City Hall, but I generally see you at City Hall, so welcome back.
Mayor, thank you, council. Aside the record trade, I'm not here for Older Americans Night.
That's why I am here, so.
My name is, my name is Rick Regal. I live on Del Cobra in Laguna Niguel. I'm representing the Chamber of Commerce tonight, so I thank you for the three minutes. First and foremost, I want to thank the city, the staff, everyone involved in our, and the new city manager, by the way, interim city manager, for coming and attending our Meet the City event last month, where members of the city and the chamber got to meet the city council, got to meet the staff, got to learn the new businesses coming in town, which I've had several comments. People were very happy with the results overall. So thank you for that. Second is anyone who'd like to learn more about the chamber, and this is an open invitation to anyone here, learn more about the chamber benefits and marketing opportunities, can attend the chamber's orientation on Wednesday, May 29th. They're held once a quarter in the chamber. Just call the chamber office or look it up online if you're interested in learning more about the chamber. And finally, I want to thank the mayor and look forward to Tuesday, June 4th, for the presentation of the State of the City address. We're having a luncheon at El Niguel Country Club. We cannot wait to learn more about honoring the past, celebrating the present, and planning the future. A wonderful tagline, by the way, feel free to use it if you'd like to. If anyone is interested in registering for this event, and it is open to the public, please go to the chamber's website at lnchamber.com. And again, the chamber thanks the council and the staff for your support. Have a good evening.
Great. Thank you so much, Rick. And I'm sure that's going to be the event of the year. So I encourage everyone, certainly, to come to that. That's right. Our next speaker is Dan Abrams. Dan, welcome.
Hi, Dan Abrams, 29601 Ivy Glen, and also past chair of the Chamber of Commerce. I also have Stephanie Winstead up with me, chairman of the chamber, and Rick Regal, our past chair. And on behalf of Laguna Niguel Chamber of Commerce, we're requesting the city of Laguna Niguel to be the 5,000 premier sponsor for the June 27th event in Laguna Design Center. With the city's 30th anniversary celebration coinciding with the chambers and with over 30 years of business relationships together, we want to make sure the city's celebrations include not just the city, community, but also the businesses. As the premier sponsor, the city's involvement will be published on our webpage, in the printed newsletter, on printed invitations, mentioned on social media, and in signage. We have a sample logo right here with, your permission can...
May I approach the bench?
Please. You can hand that to the bailiff, Tom.
So we'd like to use this with the city's permission that will be prominently displayed on a signage and incorporates both the chamber's logo and the city seal and the new 30th anniversary logo. And again, I want to enhance our much appreciated special relationship that we have with the city. No other city and chamber has the relationship that we have all been here and been a part of. So thank you.
You're welcome. And that's, we couldn't agree more. So thank you very much. I know I can't comment too much on this. I should say I love this, and I think it's fantastic. It looks great. So thank you very much. Okay, good. I have one more request to speak, but that's for the public hearing. So do we have any further requests to speak for us? Okay, with that, I will close public communications. Except for now or for later? Okay, good. Thank you. We will now move on to our consent calendar. We have items one through 14, and I will check with my council colleagues to see if there's any items they'd like to pull from the consent counter. None to my left, one to my left.
Item number eight for correction, 11, 13, and 14 for minor discussions.
All right. That is more than one. Any to my right? Sandy, Lori, anyone? Okay.
Just number seven for a comment.
Number seven. Okay. Well, let's start with that. Do I have a motion to approve the balancing?
I second.
Okay, so it's moved by Mayor Pro Tem Davies. I think I heard Councilmember Miniger as the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, let's move on to consent item number seven, which is the 2019 weed abatement program. Councilmember Reins.
I just wanted to thank our community development director for the weed abatement program and the work that you've done with that and adding the possibility of goats grazing to do some of our weed abatement and being concerned about our environment. Thank you. I'll move the item with that.
Second.
Any other discussion on that? Okay, so it's moved by Councilwoman Reins, seconded by Councilwoman Jenaway. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Number seven passes unanimously. And number eight on the consent counter, which is the approval of the paratechnic public display contract for fireworks, which is our 4th of July fireworks program.
The minor correction is for item 8A, authorize the interim city manager. It's a minor typo. So I make a motion.
Ah, okay, good. So we have a motion by Councilmember Miniger. I'll second it. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Also passes unanimously. Then we're on to consent item number 11, which is the approval of the revised plans and specifications for Alicia Parkway arterial pavement project. Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 11 is more or less like items number 13 and 14 for our Director of Public Works. I just want to make sure that we went through the experience for Crown Valley Parkway when we were doing the resurfacing, that as a part of the contract, there should be a clause included, the hours of operations shall be limited between 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, 88 cities in Los Angeles County and 33 other cities in Orange County. When they issue these contracts, traffic control plans would mandate that the traffic controls to be basically enforced within those hours so that we don't experience what we experienced for Crown Valley Parkway. So, and it's the same clause for the other items. So, Mr. Mayor, I can make the same, you know, recommendation or motion for the other ones so that the citizens of this city would be, you know, traversing through those segments during the construction without any traffic congestion or traffic delays.
I'll ask if Director Scott, do you have a comment on that?
Yes, I do, honorable mayor. And thank you for the question, Councilmember Miniger. We have included those provisions within the contract documents to limit the traffic control hours from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM during the workday. We intend to fully enforce those as well.
Very good. Thank you very much, Dan.
And if I understood, I heard Councilmember Miniger move 11, 13, and 14. Is that correct?
Exactly, in the same fashion.
Okay, good. With the same, with the same.
Yes.
Okay, so it's moved by Councilmember Miniger, seconded by Councilwoman Reins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those three also pass unanimously, which brings us to the end of the consent calendar. So thank you all very much for that quick work. All right, our, our first discussion item is a public hearing item number one regarding Proposition 218, proposed solid waste rate increase. This is a public hearing on proposed increases to the solid waste collection services rate and the new food waste collection requirements. I was going to ask Engineering Services Manager Mas Budi, if he would please, to provide a staff report for us.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable council members. On November 20th, 2018, the city council approved the new solid waste franchise agreement with CRNR, which included a proposed rate increase to be effective July 1st, 2019. As a result of the proposed rate increase, it's required a Proposition 218 majority protest process. And staff sent to all 22,196 properties in the city, a mailer, including the rates and the protest process. And we'll be hearing the result later tonight. The franchise agreement includes a 3% proposed rate increase to be effective July 1st, 2019, plus a one-time increase of $2.45 per residential account due to the cost of a new organic waste collection program that we're required to implement. And then there's an additional, an annual automatic increase for inflation that is included. Part of it is when the landfill increases, and the other one is part of the PPI that affects CRNR's operation. With that, that concludes my presentation. I could go into more detail as to the process of the proposition 218, or I'd be happy to answer any of...
I don't have a question because I thought the staff report was quite comprehensive on that. We have seen quite a bit of information on it. Are there any other questions for, for staff? I do have one more. The applicant here is, well... I do have one more, the applicant here as well. So, thank you very much, by the way, Mr. Masbooti.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask Dean Ruffidge, who's the Senior Vice President at CRNR, to come forward and provide a little bit of information on the solid waste collection and the proposed rate increase and then the new food services collection requirements. So, welcome, good to see you.
Good evening, Mayor Jennings, members of the city council. Again, my name is Dean Ruffridge, I'm with CRNR. And with me tonight is one of the two full-time sustainability specialists assigned to Laguna Niguel and it's Carla De La Rosario. Both of these specialists are assigned to the City of Laguna Niguel full-time for contract compliance and enlisting commercial and multifamily residential complexes into mandatory commercial and organic recycling programs. Tonight is the culmination of almost three years of research and study in bringing Laguna Niguel into total state compliance with new legislation pertaining to solid waste and recycling. All of the new and revised rates are being proposed tonight are based upon new laws that are required by each and every city in the state of California. The new rates include a residential component to deliver all green waste and food scraps to the CRNR anaerobic digester in Paris, California, for conversion into compressed natural gas as well as fertilizers. No more delivery to the landfills for grain waste to be used as alternative daily cover as all of the cities in Orange County have done for decades. Since the rate year 2012-13, ratepayers in Laguna Niguel have enjoyed a zero rate adjustment for almost seven years. Even the cost of living has been waived for the last seven years here in Laguna Niguel. Since 2016, the City of Laguna Niguel and your consultants have studied rate comparisons, done cost studies on collection methods, time studies to determine appropriate rates to cover the cost of collection, disposal, and processing of all these materials. The rates to be approved tonight encompass a tremendous amount of time and energy, to be fair to the company, the city, and especially the ratepayers. CRNR is in agreement with the staff report, the consultant's final review and recommendations, and we look forward to working closely with the city and keeping the city in full compliance going forward with all state legislation. Mr. Mayor, I'm open for any questions you may have. Thank you very much.
Dean, thank you so much for being here tonight, and I do want to open it up to questions for my colleagues. I will say by, just as some insight, this is a fantastic example of unfunded mandates from Sacramento changing what we do locally. And Sacramento has dictated that we have to now collect our food waste and do something with it. We also have to change the way that for decades or more we've collected green waste. It used to be that you'd mow your yard or collect your leaves and put them in your green bucket, and those would be taken to the landfill shredded and sprayed across the top of the landfill each evening, sort of as a cover as to what they put down, and the next day they would come in and put the new waste on top of it. Well, that's no longer acceptable, so all of this new waste, including the green waste and the food scraps waste, is coming to your home in June, I think it is, if I understand correctly, July? Okay, so we all are going to change our daily routines to collect this. We happen to be in a part of the country and with a contractor that has the only example of an anaerobic digester in the United States. They've built this thing, it's state-of-the-art. My understanding is that the predecessor for it exists in Germany, and we had to go there to look at it, so this is very cutting-edge to the U.S. It's so cutting-edge that our friends in Los Angeles are using this anaerobic digester through a separate contract with CRNR, but we have first dibs on it because we have a contract with them. And nobody likes a rate increase, and I'm certainly in that camp, and I'm sure CRNR, if I asked them, they would say the same thing. But not having had a rate increase for seven years and dealing with what is a very, very large, brand-new, unfunded mandate from Sacramento, I think this is, if ever there was a time for adjusting the rates, this is one of them. We have a fantastic facility. We are very soon, as soon as this comes into effect in July, we are going to be the envy of other cities because we have access to this, and I think that's a real special thing for Laguna Niguel, and it's on top of our otherwise sort of platinum-level service that I get used to because we have large collection item pickup days and other things that they all do, which I didn't know that other cities didn't have, but we have that, and it's a service that they all do for us. So, let me open it up to the rest of the council and see if there are any other questions beyond that. Anyone? Councilwoman Jenaway.
Well, I'd like to, you know, piggyback on to the mayor's comments about this being an unfunded mandate, but it also, when you think about what it's doing, it is we are taking care of our environment, and to do that, there is a cost to that because there's more work that's being done, more facilities had to be built, and I know about four years ago, when CRNR was first starting to roll out information on that, I was very impressed with what was going to be done and what is now being done. So, I feel Laguna Niguel's very blessed that CRNR is our waste contractor because you are on the cutting edge of this, and this is something that will serve our residents very well. I do have a question, though, because I look at this and I see, you know, what's being done, I understand it. Again, thank you, CRNR, for being such a good partner with our city, but when I think about what's going to happen in my kitchen when this is implemented, will there be an education program for the consumers and the residents, and do you have any information you can share with us so how we, as the users of this service, will be able to implement it in our own homes?
I was planning to take my food scraps there, so I don't know.
Well, see, and I need to know what to do with them.
Yeah, Carla will give some more details to answer that question properly, but there's a couple of things that will take place tomorrow morning after this council meeting tonight, assuming things will go through tonight. CRNR will be putting an order in for a large number of containers for about 5,000 residents in the City of Laguna Niguel that do not have the third cart. They do not have a green waste or a food waste cart. Those will be distributed to those customers, I think, the first week of July, first and second week of July, and then, starting the first week of July, we'll be delivering 22,000 kitchen pails, plastic pails that can be used in the kitchen, kept either on the counter. My wife wouldn't keep it on the counter, it's under the sink in the cabinet, that you can put food scraps in, and then, once filled or every few days, take it out and then dump it into your green waste cart. And Carla, if you want to expand on that a little bit?
Good evening. We understand that this is a very robust program, and we want to ensure success, and so a portion of our public education and outreach materials will also include, tomorrow we'll be sending out an announcement letter. Like Dean had mentioned earlier, we'll be delivering containers that'll actually be from June 24th through July 8th for those that don't currently have an existing organics container. And then we'll also be revamping our website, and we're also working with the city on adding additional information on the city website in terms of a how-to recycle your organics video. The food scrap containers that will be distributed will include also public education material, another instructional kind of how-to guide, and when there are city events or even chamber events that we're able to attend, I and the second sustainability specialist will be attending that for outreach as well.
Great. Any follow-up on that? Are you good?
I'm good.
Good, I just want to say thank you for wearing your 30th anniversary pin, too, so that's a nice touch. Yeah, just a question for Mayor Pro Tem Davies.
So, Carla, I visited the anaerobic plant, and they had shown that there was a smaller waste can that was for the food, so is that what you're talking about, delivering in addition to the pail to the house, to inside the kitchen area?
Oh, so that smaller container is that pail, and it's, we'll have pictures of this too for all of you, and it'll be on our website, and it'll show kind of what it looks like, but that's the only thing that is in-house that will be delivered.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Davies?
Thank you. In regards to community outreach, is this something you could do with Parks and Rec at the senior center? I just think that's going to be something new for our seniors and not sure what they're going to be doing with that. Also, if you could perhaps put together some type of flyer that we could give to the different property managers and the HOAs throughout the city, I'm on my board, and I think it'd be great something that we can put up so that they have questions. In regards to that, how are you going to be dropping that off? For instance, you have either your single-family home or living in a condo, is it just going to be a trash day, you're going to just drop off an extra can, or just, I was just curious?
Yeah, so for those previously green waste exempt areas, we're going to have a separate truck that isn't our service truck. Go ahead and drop off the, there are going to be 35-gallon containers in addition to the little food scrap pail kind of container, which will be placed kind of around the doorstep area.
Okay, and for, just a suggestion, if you do a flyer, it might be great even, you know, to say, please put your address on that, you know, if you have that extra container that's going to be out there, right, because you now have three containers on trash day?
Yes, the little pail is only for...
Inside.
Inside the kitchen, yes.
And you're not having a separate container for that outside to be picked up?
We're going to be using, yes, existing green waste containers, and those that don't have a green waste container, the one will be delivered to them.
Yeah, because our complex doesn't have that, and that's why even just putting, please put your address on there, I just know when you've got 264 units, nobody knows whose is what, and it just will protect it for that than someone taking another extra one, so...
Got it.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it, thank you.
Right, you bet. All right, thank you very much. Before I open the public hearing, I want to make sure that I ask any members of the public that have a protest letter to present it now to the city clerk for a final count. And I understand that the city clerk, Gomez, has some. Do you have a final count on that yet?
The final count is 24.
24.
24 received, yes.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
With that, I will open the public hearing. I don't have any requests to speak forum on that. City Clerk Gomez, have you received any? I have not. I will open that for the purposes of opening it to see if there are any that would like to speak, seeing none, I will then close public comments. And City Clerk Gomez, you said 22 is the final number? 24, who've submitted statements in opposition to the rate increase, correct? All right. And does that constitute 50% of the property owners or customers that this applies to?
No, it does not.
All right, good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Public hearing now being closed, any other council comments before we move on to anything else?
I just, once again, I just want to say, I know it's never easy when we have a rate increase for anything, but this truly is about our future, and we're celebrating our 30 years, we're planning for our future, so the more sustainable we become as a community, the better we are for our future generations. So, having been to the anaerobic plant and watching what they do and seeing what they're accomplishing, running a 24/7 operation, it's never shut down 365 days a year, I think that for the minor increase that we're getting, the benefit that is going to come to all of us in our community is going to be well worth it, so with that, that's it.
Well said, thank you, and I did give a, I'm sorry, did you have a, to the rate increase? All right, I'm sorry, what's your name, sir? All right, thank you. Well, then, let's definitely do that. So, come on up, Mr. Miller. I will reopen public communications for the purpose of, I'm sorry, I didn't catch you, Mr. Miller, I definitely want to give you a chance to do that, so now's your time. And you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
And council.
If you would please state your name and address further.
My name is Roger Miller. My address is 29532 Via Alto Cerro in Laguna Niguel. I have been a resident here since 1972. I am a facilities project manager and as a consultant, I have over 50 years' experience in this field of property leases and service contracts. I have been responsible for cost savings over millions of dollars from large facilities from coast to coast. I am here to protest the rate increase to the CRNR waste pickup, not because it's an unfair increase, but rather, it's because I believe there's other ways to save money and not affect the trash pickup for Laguna Niguel. Over the last few years, I've contacted the city a few times along with management from CRNR, and I know there are ways that we can reduce the fees, not for this time around, but to have a discussion for 2020. I'm asking the council tonight to do a full investigation on some opportunities to make those savings. One of the things are that our fees could be included in our property taxes as a separate line item, not part of our property tax in purpose. This is the way it's done in the City of Los Angeles, it has been for years. This is also the way that CRNR collects from seven cities in the Riverside area and also Costa Mesa. There are some advantages of doing this in our, paying it in our taxes. One, it's, we would reduce the quarterly bills that are sent out by CRNR. That would save them some personnel, that would eliminate some people in their accounting department, it also eliminates the process of having costs, the cost of having an outside collection agent to pay fees, pick up fees from deadbeats. It also eliminates the drivers from having to get notices from the office to say which places to pick up trash and which places not to pick up trash. That's a waste of time, doesn't need to happen. There are some pluses for us. As a resident, we eliminate our needs to make out quarterly checks to pay for this bill or pay for it in whatever way we do it, whether it's electronic or whatever.
You have 20 seconds.
Okay, I just wanted to say that this, the method of collecting the money could be done differently, and property tax would be one of those ways. And again, my recommendation that we look at this as a cost alternative for 2020, and I'd like to see a full study made between the city council and CRNR.
Dr. Miller, thank you very much for coming. Any other requests to speak forum? Did that at all change our numbers on the opposition? At 25 now, thank you very much. Okay, with that, I'll now close public hearing and see if there's any discussion after that? Okay, thank you. I need to have a motion to approve public hearing item number 1 regarding the proposed increase to the solid waste collection service rate, and in the absence of a majority protest, adopt resolution number 2019-1284 approving increases to the solid waste collection service rate. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, it's moved by Councilwoman Reins, seconded by Councilwoman Jenaway. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. And, Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, that is including the additions that will be placed into the resolution with respect to the protest numbers by the city clerk, correct? Thank you, yes. Thank you. Thank you. All right, our next item is public hearing item number 2, and that is for a zoning code amendment, ZCA 1901, for zoning code updates. And I believe we're going to have Contract Planner Greg, please provide us with the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and honorable council members. My name is Amber Gregg, and I'm a contract planner, and I first want to start by saying that I commend you on your amazing and dedicated staff here at the City of Laguna Niguel, and I am completely honored to be working with them and for you in this capacity, so thank you very much.
No, thank you. Welcome.
Tonight, we're going to be going over zoning code amendment 1901, and this is in response to an initiation that the city council made back in October to review streamlining and clarity opportunities within our zoning ordinance. And in particular, on this one, we are going to be focusing on residential accessory structures, restaurant and retail food, and non-residential parking requirements. And if you bear with me, this will be a brief presentation just to kind of clarify the opportunities that we found within our code that we're presenting to you tonight. So, the first one has to do with residential accessory structures, particularly unenclosed accessory structures. Our zoning code currently allows for unenclosed accessory structures to be a maximum height of 12 feet, and that basically accounts for a flat lattice patio cover that is typical to have in your backyard, but more recently, an outdoor room, or a California room, as they're known, have become increasingly popular with residences in order to enjoy the temperate climate that we have here in Laguna Niguel. And in order to build one of these, a resident would have to go through a discretionary review process if it was over 12 feet in the height, so staff is proposing to increase that height to 15 feet within the building envelope, and by doing that, you would allow the residences to be able to establish a pitch roof patio cover like in the pictures here without having to go through a discretionary review process. It would just be reviewed through the plan check permit. It would just be reviewed through the plan check permit. The next item is restaurants and eateries here. Our code currently requires any food use to obtain a use permit regardless of any negative impacts that that might, might pose. And that's very atypical compared to other communities in the surrounding area or cities at large. Typically, food uses are allowed by right, and if there's a negative ancillary use such as alcohol or live entertainment, that portion requires a use permit. So what we're proposing is to follow suit and allow retail and food uses by right, and should there be any alcohol sales, irregular operating hours, or live entertainment, those uses would go through a use permit process, and we'd be able to condition them to make sure there's not a negative impact to the surrounding neighborhood. The next has to do with parking requirements, and this is in response to comments that the city's received as part of their economic development efforts. And in the business community, there's been a lot of concern and feedback about our parking requirements here in the city. And that's because the way our parking rates are structured, some of them are arranged, meaning that it can fluctuate from, for one example, five spaces to 13 spaces per thousand, and that creates a lot of uncertainty as far as how much parking is my restaurant really going to require. And it's also very difficult for staff to administer because the code doesn't give any guidelines in order to establish which number of parking spaces we should utilize. And so there's a concern about being equal amongst all the different businesses as to what parking we should require. So what staff is proposing is to define what restaurants and retail food uses are, and it's a very, I'm not going to read this to you, but it's a very easy way to interpret that if you have 10 or fewer seats, you're considered retail food, and if you have 11 or more seats, you're basically considered a restaurant. And what we did is we came up with clear requirements that state if you are in one of these types of uses, for example, retail food, your requirement would be five spaces per thousand as opposed to a range of not knowing. And this makes it easy for potential new businesses coming to the city to know exactly how much parking they're going to be required to provide, and it also makes it much easier on staff to figure out how much parking would be required by the businesses. The other item that we looked at had to do with shared parking. And shared parking recognizes that larger centers with a mix of use require less parking. And the reason for that is because different businesses have different peak operating hours. And so one business might be busy where the other business might be closed or just not have a lot of people there, and so there's an ebb and flow to those, the parking utilization within those parking spaces. And our code currently does reflect this and accounts for it, but in order to take advantage of that shared parking, some sort of discretionary review is required. And what staff is proposing to do is to modify that. And the reason for that is because of our 14 major shopping centers within the city, 12 of those centers actually are at a parking deficit, which means that right now they don't meet our zoning parking requirement. So any business coming in has to go through the discretionary review process. And to kind of put that in perspective, over the last five years, the city has processed 30 applications for, basically to allow a deficiency in the parking. And of those 30, zero have been denied. And in other words, the city's approved all of them. And that's not because we're just a business-friendly community, it's because a parking utilization study was submitted as part of that request, and that utilization study showed that there was ample parking in that center in order to accommodate those businesses. And here's just a quick example of one of our shopping centers that shows this, a picture of how this is actually working. So this is a Lisa Village Shopping Center, and in the center you can see that that parking is well utilized, and it's right in front of the Whole Foods Shopping Center. But if you look on the outskirts and on the ends of that, there is ample parking available should anybody wish to, to park in those areas or in order to expand the businesses. So the proposed changes are for major shopping centers to be allowed up to 25% parking discount or deficit, and we're defining major shopping centers, the centers with 400 spaces or more, and that would be allowed by right, so they would no longer be required to get the discretionary review. And neighborhood shopping centers, those with less than 400 square feet, can still go and have a, apply for a parking discount, but it would take a discretionary review process. And the reason for that is because once you go below that 400 space threshold, there's less opportunity for parking utilization, and we want to make sure that there's no spillover to surrounding neighborhoods that would impact them and be a negative to those communities. The Planning Commission recommends that the city council adopt the draft resolution as noted in your staff reports, and staff is available to answer any questions.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great, great report, appreciate you giving it.
No, thank you.
Wanted to check first with the council and see if there are any comments. Councilwoman Menega?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
There's questions for staff right now, so we'll get.
Yes, two specific questions. For the shared parking utilization, are you using the ULI Urban Land Institute in Chicago? Because we want to be a business-friendly city. A lot of cities, I can mention, City Irvine, that are very strict, very stringent, therefore anytime I want to go anywhere, I cannot even find a parking space there. So did you, I looked at all your numbers. For the shared parking, did you compare them with the ULIs' numbers for the similar demographically and socio-economically compatible city?
So we did look at ULI numbers as well as traffic engineering numbers that are, that are accepted, that basically state that the numbers that we used as far as the maximum ratio are in keeping, so the, the new ratios that are proposed are in keeping with both of those. In regard to the shared parking requirement, you specifically talked about Irvine. Irvine has a commercial center parking requirement, which is significantly lower than what Laguna Niguel would currently, currently requires and is what is proposed. So we would not go to that low level of that. So we did review all other cities with that, but mainly we looked at the existing conditions and the history of Laguna Niguel and the shopping centers for the last 20 years. The city has kept detailed parking accounts as far as when they're granting these discretionary permits to see what the deficit is and if we are still staying within that threshold. And that's why the 25% was utilized based on existing conditions and past studies.
Actually, I'm very pleased with the 25% discount, which I call it buffer area, because in a lot of other cities, the threshold is 20%. So 25% is very good, it's going to attract a lot of new businesses to the city. And my second question is in reference to individual independent centers. Did you use ITE trip generation, parking generation manual in Washington DC to make sure that our numbers would be more conducive, more attractive to potential developers to move to this city to do business?
We did. We looked at those, and based on the code, the way it exists right now, our numbers are substantially higher than what that requirement was, so this brings it to what those requirements are.
Very good, thank you.
Any more questions of staff? All right. Yeah, we'll get, we'll get the comments in a minute. Let me go ahead and open, do you have a question for staff? Go ahead.
I just want to clarify, like, so on some of the smaller shopping centers with the way that you're reducing this, is it going to affect any of the smaller centers with their parking requirements or anything, or somebody who's already in there, are they going to be grandfathered into this? How's that going to, like, when you adopt this, I guess what I'm asking is, is that going to be effective for all of the smaller centers and parking centers?
So based on the whole package that's proposed in front of you, the smallest centers will also see a benefit. They will be able to take advantage of the reduced parking rates, we are lowering those. But as far as the neighborhood centers, they would still have the same process where they would apply for discretionary permit to have the deficiency. And again, the smaller centers tend to have higher parking utilization, and we just want to make sure we protect the surrounding neighborhood. But yes, they will see a benefit.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and open public communications on this now and receive testimony regarding the proposed, the proposed change. I have one request to speak for him, do you have any others? Okay, good, so we have one. Our first speaker, and probably only speaker, Robert Montgomery. Bob, good to see you, welcome back.
You, Mayor, and members of the council. Bob Montgomery, representing Bois Satter Group, we're the owners of Center Ranch Niguel, Laguna Niguel Town Center, and Molten Plaza. I've been working with staff, actually literally, since the founding of the city on, on developing and managing parking regulations for the shopping centers. This particular zoning code amendment is something that we've been, we had been hoping for, for a long time. It will be, it'll greatly help our tenants to not be quite so scared by the idea that they're going to have to get a use permit every time they, every time they want to open a new business. And so it's a, it's going to be a great benefit to our tenants and to our centers, and, you know, certainly will reduce a lot of the paperwork that we've had to experience over the years in that. I think staff's done a, just a really magnificent job in, in listening to us and the other shopping center owners and our tenants, and coming up with a, with a program that I think is, I think is going to be effective and really very business-friendly in the city going forward. So again, thank you for, thank you for this, it's, it's a great help.
Great, thank you very much, Bob. Appreciate you coming. Hearing, no further, I'll close public communications and open it up for council comments. I will start on that, I think, and say that this has been a real effort by our Economic Development Ad Hoc Committee for the last couple of years. Councilwoman Jenaway and I started talking about this over a year ago, and staff has been fantastic in bringing that to us. I think it's the right thing to do. I was surprised to see that we had 30 of those. I'll tell you that all of this parking talk brought back flashbacks from my days on Planning Commission, so I haven't had that much tech speak in a little while. So I, I can tell you that it's, it's a big hurdle for new businesses to come in and try to face something. They want to open a restaurant, and they don't know anything at all about the rest of the parking, and those are exceedingly high hurdles for some businesses to have to jump. And I'm glad that we're doing one more step to try to eliminate all the red tape and sort of be the welcoming city that we've wanted to be. And I think this fits right into our concierge-level service. Certainly something that the new Economic Development Ad Hoc Committee insisted that come forward, and I'm glad to see it here tonight. So any other comments? Councilwoman Jenaway?
Well, thank you for that excellent report, Ms. Gregg. Very thorough, and it's really what our city needs. I mean, I think some of this is long overdue, so last year we started the, I'm sorry, I'm tired. It's been a long day. The Economic Development Ad Hoc Committee, and this is a result of the, of reaching out to the business community. Former city manager Ridge had initiated some workshops with the property owners and property managers and with our community development team, and this is something we've been hearing that our business community needs, and I'm glad to see it coming forward because our goal is to allow businesses to open their doors as soon as possible. And this helps them move towards that goal. And when we did the, started the streamlining, the processes, one of the first things we saw rolled out was the concierge-level service, and now we have this. So I keep up the great work, Director Orduna and your team, because this is really helping Laguna Niguel emphasize how business-friendly we are in a responsible way for our community. So thank you.
Great, and anyone else? Again.
Go ahead.
Mayor Protem Davies.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm very excited to see this come fruition. It's been some time, when I came on board in 2012, we actually sat and got together with the different property managers and, you know, kind of said, what can we do to make business easier for you? We've always been very blessed to have pretty high occupancy when it comes to commercial properties, but I know this is going to make a big difference. And I want to thank our team, Jonathan, John, Amber, you really took it up above and pushed it through because we've been wanting to see this. I know it's going to be a difference, and again, we are considered business-friendly, we don't have required business permits, license, so this is going to make it even better. So again, thank you for all your hard work, and as well as Mayor Protem and Councilmember Jenaway for working out the last few years. Thank you.
Thank you. Unless there's any other comments, I will make a motion to waive the full reading of the ordinance 2019-197, an ordinance adopting zoning code amendment ZCA 1901, amending the Laguna Niguel Municipal Code relating to residential accessory structures, restaurant and retail food uses, and non-residential parking requirements for restaurants and shopping centers, and making a determination of exemption under SEQA to introduce ordinance number 2019-197 as read by title and to direct that the ordinance be placed on the agenda for second reading and adoption at the next regular city council meeting. Anybody want to second that?
I second it.
Okay, we have a unanimous second over here, so I'll go with Councilwoman Jenaway, since you were on the Economic Development Team last year, so I'll give you that one. Any other comments? All in favor, do you have one comment?
I just have to say, since Bob is in the audience, I want to thank you for getting Wood Ranch in. That opened up on Monday, and the place was packed, so thank you very much, and we can't wait to hear what's going where TGI Friday is. We're placing money on it right now.
I got a lot of questions for Bob after this. Thank you very much, and I echo that and second it. So all in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much, everybody. That's a, that's a great boon for the city, and I really, again, contract planner Greg, thank you so much for, for helping us with all that. That concludes all of our discussion items tonight. We will move on to other business, the first of which is the Economic Development Ad Hoc Committee, which we've heard nothing about tonight. So I, I just wanted to give you a quick report. We did have our recent meeting. I am prepared to attend with the Mayor Protem and our Community Development Director Orduna. We're going to the ICSC Conference in Las Vegas towards the end of this month. We are actively soliciting, working with our, our consultants on finding new fits for the city of Laguna Niguel, and that includes all types of retail, restaurants, and other things. We have a lot of data at our disposal. Our new contractor, which is called the Retail Coach, they're an entity out of Texas, and they have arranged for some meetings for us. While we are in Las Vegas, we don't have to buy a booth, they have a large booth, and so we will be in the center, not out where the city parts are, so this is a, this is a real benefit to us as well. Very, very excited about this. I will tell you that this all came as a concept when we had several open slots and several needs for new restaurants, but because we have our new Wood Ranch, because we have Stone Fire Grill, and we've got the others that are coming in and that are online, you know, things are going very well here in town. We heard you say you want more restaurants and you want more retail options, and they seem to be flooding in, which is great. And those begat others, and it keeps expanding. So that doesn't mean that we're stopping, but our, our next step is to see what else could come here. And there's been a lot of creative ideas in the economic development discussion groups, and I can't wait to report back to you, probably in June when we get back from that. So with that, unless you have anything else, was there anything else? Okay, good. We'll move on to council reports, and I'll start with Councilwoman Rains. Anything tonight? Good. Mayor Protem Davies.
Just real quick, again, Stone Fire Grill has opened up as well as Wood Ranch. Please go check them out. They did a beautiful job, service is great, the food is fantastic. We were, actually had Stone Fire Grill, a closed session, so it was, it was excellent. They have the best carrot cake around, just putting that out there. Also, I was honored to receive the position of president for the ACCLC, so I'm looking forward to that, working with the different cities, thank you. And, you know, making sure that we keep local control here as well as, you know, looking into legislation that could affect that, so thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Councilwoman Menega?
Thank you. I attended a meeting with Congresswoman Katie Porter regarding TCA, attended the OCOC meeting in Irvine, and the Board of Directors unanimously opposed Assembly Bill 1273 authored by Assemblyman Bro on JPO toll roads, attended the budget workshop for TC in Irvine. I represented the city of Laguna Niguel and District 12 of Orange County at SCAG General Assembly in Palm Desert last week, and with that, I conclude my comments.
Great, thank you very much. Councilwoman Rains, Jenaway?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of the many meetings to highlight is one that actually Mayor Protem Davies attended, as well as we had a meeting, a legislative committee meeting with Senator Morlock. So it's always good for us to hear what's going on in Sacramento and how we can affect that, and getting our voices heard, and it is becoming harder and harder because Orange County is becoming the minority voice in Sacramento, but we keep up the good fight for that. And today, I left my house while it was still dark, I've been in Sacramento all day, got back just before closed session, and I was up there for what is known as Senior Rally Day. So the mayor had a proclamation earlier for Older Americans Month, which is the month of May, and so Senior Rally Day is in Sacramento in May, and it is organized by a number of the different coalitions throughout the state that represent senior citizens. And one of them that we have several members in our community who are part of is the California Senior Legislature, and there are some other organizations as well, the California Congress of Senior Americans, and it is to advocate for senior citizens because in the next 20 years, that population's going to double in our state, and it's making sure that our communities are ready for that. And also taking a look at it, that it's not, that we're not, we shouldn't be siloing the transportation and housing, we should be looking at it, is it livable for all ages? We should be looking at it, is it livable for all ages? And because people are living longer, we need to extend that, that upper age range and to make sure that our communities are livable for all. So, it was very interesting, a lot, a lot of talk on the governor's proposal for the master plan on aging. And that is really a combination. Right now, there are six different bills up in Sacramento that are proposed that are part of it. So, it's not one bill, but it's a combination of bills. And the, what we are interested in finding out is that, how long is this going to take to develop this master plan on aging? You know, someone said one year, someone said 10 years. I don't think they know. But this is something that they're working towards in recognition of the growing senior population and to make sure that our state is ready for that. And housing and transportation are very big issues in that. We see where seniors are being forced out of housing because they can no longer afford it. We also see with some of the agreements, the low-income agreements where they're sunsetting so that the seniors are now being forced out of somewhere that they have been living. We're seeing no access to transportation and also health and nutrition. And when nutrition is affected for seniors, when they can't afford fresh food, then it's just a domino effect for all their other health issues that come out of that. So, there's a lot to be done. It's very comprehensive. So, you, you will be hearing a lot of that in the news about the master plan on aging. So, keep your ears open. But that is something that many of us from South County, we're up in Sacramento today, advocating for senior issues with our legislators. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Not a lot to report. I've been busy in meetings and other things, but I won't go through all of those. I will tell you, we have had ongoing meetings with our Board of Supervisors relating to homelessness issues. So, those discussions continue as they always will. But we're making some progress there, and I'm at least glad to have the conversations going. Because I'm going to be at the ICSE Conference in the middle part of the month, I will be missing, unfortunately, our second meeting in May because we'll still be at that conference at that point. So, I think Mayor Protem Davies is coming back early to cover that, and I appreciate her for doing that. One of the benefits of being mayor is getting to talk on behalf of the rest of the council and the city. And this one time, I want to use that extraordinarily limited power to say welcome to Bob Hall and say thank you for being here tonight. This is your first meeting. We're so glad to have you on board, and I really appreciate all you've done so far in stepping in and say welcome to Laguna Niguel, welcome to City Hall, and, and we are at your disposal. So, we thank you for all you're doing for us. And we heard in closed session, the, the tight timelines that we've placed on Bob to do the recruitment for our new city manager. And we really appreciate that. And I just want to say publicly, thank you for that and welcome. Great. And with that, let's go around the room. We'll get some department head meetings. I'll start to my left with Chief McDaniel.
Thank you, Mayor. Police Services, along with Teen Road to Safety, and the DMV is hosting a teen driver safety night this Thursday from 6:30 to 7:45 here in the community center. This is part of Laguna Niguel's Street Smarts campaign. And we'll be discussing various issues that affect teen drivers, and it's, it's not just for the teen driver, but also for their parents. Some advice for those folks as well. So, we still have spots available. If they want to contact Police Services during the day, and reserve a spot. But that's 6:30 this Thursday, May night. And then, by way of recap, we did, we hosted a drug takeback the previous Saturday, April 27th. We were able to collect 470 pounds of unused medications.
Wow.
Medications. By way of comparison of the 11, 11 collection sites hosted by the Sheriff's Department, the next closest was 320 pounds. So, folks did a great job of publicizing this event, both city folks, Police Services folks, and even some private groups helped us get that word out, and it was received greatly. So, thank you to the citizens for helping out and assisting us by limiting availability to unused medications. The next one is in October, and we'll be hearing more about that as it comes up.
Great, thank you. And we also, at the Youth Committee this past week, I know they've been pushing the messaging out about the driver safety program. And there was some discussion about perhaps doing something very similar to that for a senior driving program, which I think would be fantastic, or anybody really else that might want. So, thank you very much for that. It's great. Our recently very, very busy Finance Director Erlinson. We have budget meetings coming up, so...
Well, as a matter of fact, we do, a week from today. Tuesday, May 14th.
That's why I have that look on my face right now.
On Tuesday, May 14th, 1:00 p.m. right here in the city council chambers, we will be having our annual budget workshop. And we're looking for, looking forward to all the participation from the members of the public and all city staff. Thank you.
Yeah, on behalf of the council, I do want to invite the public. It is one of the best times to get public in, and we will have public comments then. They're great times to give input on the budget. And you can hear how we prioritize things and what the different department heads are wanting to do. So, it's a long meeting, but it's a good one. So, let me skip past City Manager, go to City Attorney Ennis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing to report this evening.
That is an excellent report. Thank you so much. Well done. Gold star report. Our Engineering Services Manager Mazbudi.
A quick update on the Crown Valley Park.
Please, thank you.
Two years three. The building's moving good. I wish it didn't rain as much.
I'm sorry, it's moving or is it coming along?
It's coming along.
Oh, it's coming along. If it's moving, we need more beams.
No, it's looking good. And we're finalizing the pool now so that we can turn it over to our aquatic team. So, you'll be seeing soon a new trailer come in before the YMCA where the aquatic team will move in temporarily with the lifeguards. So, we're working diligently so that hopefully our residents will enjoy our pool in June, hopefully.
Looks, looks great. And I've had so many good conversations with the CWD driver people. They are doing good work.
Yeah.
Glad to have them on board. Community Development Director Orduna. Gold star for you. Planning Manager Morgan. Good, thank you. Planner Gregg? Oh, good. We're happy to have you here. Our Honoree of the Month, or is it Week? City Clerk Gomez. Oh, that's, yeah, we're not feeling sorry for you being out, so...
I missed you.
Yeah. The sympathy's on our side. Parks and Recreation Director Yudala.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I have a lot to say tonight. Thank you. Our first BMX late-night event is this Friday, May 10th, from 12:00 p.m. to midnight. A daily pass is required to attend that. We also have the Music and Arts Fest, or the Music Festival sponsored by the Youth Committee on Friday, May 17th, from 6:30 to 9:00. And that's going to be at Sea Country Center this year due to the construction at Crown Valley Park. You can support local musical artists, including the bands 83, The Dahlia, and Japan. And food trucks will be on site for this free event. And as the weather has been warming up, we're starting to notice more of our rattlesnake friends in our open spaces. So, we have lots of amazing wildlife in Laguna Niguel, and we encourage everyone to be aware while they're out and enjoy the beauty, but use caution when, when exploring the parks. And we do have a couple opportunities. We have a new popular class that we're offering for rattlesnake avoidance for dogs. And it's been very well-received. There are 20-minute appointments. May 19th is the next opportunity. It's $65, and we're receiving very positive feedback from people that have put their dogs in that class and how to avoid the snakes. And also, on June 27th, we're going to have a free informative lecture, a very popular lecture about snakes in Orange County that we have every year. We have information about all this information on our city website or in our city's recreation brochure. Thank you.
Great, thank you. The summer concert series are all announced now, and they're on the city website as well, right?
They are.
And did, have we settled on the, on the date for the 30th anniversary carnival event?
It'll be August 16th, 17th, and 18th.
Okay, great. So, is that on the calendar? Is that on the city calendar now, too? I think...
We will double-check, but it will be soon if not.
Great, thank you. Fantastic summer, full of fun, coming to the city. And a lot of it has to do with the 30th anniversary. So, please, please go check this and get involved and come to the youth concert. Deputy City Manager Bell?
I just wanted to report that the city of Laguna Niguel has earned the Better City for Pets certification. They sent an assessment, and I filled it all out, and they sent us back a congratulations. There will be a nationwide announcement in July.
That is fantastic. And I was at the U.S. Conference of Mayors. They had a booth there. And they said, you know, do you want to have your city be certified as being good for pets? And there's a few processes. Apparently, we're awesome at that.